The Finance Committee.
To order at 5:30, roll call please.
Commissioner Lloyd, Commissioner Winfrey.
Here.
Commissioner Ellenberg.
Here.
Commissioner Brown.
Here.
Commissioner Avery.
Here.
Commissioner Shoemaker.
Present.
Commissioner Kuzinow.
Here.
Commissioner Wayhill.
Here.
Commissioner Davis. We do have a quorum.
Okay, I need a motion to approve the meeting minutes.
I'll move it.
October the 2nd.
Court.
Is there any discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed?
Motion passes. We now take time for public comment to the committee. If there's anybody that wishes to address the committee, please step up to the mic and state your name and address, and you have, what, two minutes, right?
Mm-hmm.
Second time, is there anybody else that wishes to address the committee? Third time, seeing none, we close public comment. Communications.
None.
Old business. Looking for a motion for Resolution 24-533, approval of a purchase order to angle armor of the fiscal year ending in 2025 in an amount not to exceed $34,866 to provide for ballistic vests. The cost of this purchase will be paid from the following account. Is there any questions or comments? I just have one, is, which department is this for?
Sheriff's Office.
Okay, that's what I assumed.
Us.
Oh, yeah, that's okay. Any other discussion? Seeing and hearing none, all those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed?
Motion passes. 24-1188, approval of a residential substance abuse treatment, R stat in-kind match grant.
Support.
Have a motion and support, is there any discussion?
Mr. Chair.
Yes, sir.
I'll defer to Commissioner Ellenberg.
I was gonna see if there's anybody here to explain it.
No.
Yeah, I knew there was. There she is.
Thank you, Marlene, go ahead.
Yeah. So in April, obviously, what we'll identify is that we had came as a committee to request funds, those dollars were never utilized, implementation was carried on further for the summer, and honestly, we would have never been able to execute that opportunity, we just, it just, the timing was just not there, we were not able to at the capacity. Now, we've been lucky enough that the MSP is gonna continue, and so we are requesting an amendment within our agreement. We had never utilized that account number, and we are now requesting from those medications, based on the way that the agreement is written out, for us to leverage the position, leverage utilizing in-kind as the quotes and dash with that, and changing it in that modality. What we'll identify during Governmental Operations Committee is it will flow a little better and be aligned, because the contract itself, that's hosted by the Sheriff's Office, and then our agreement, that will be the sub, leveraged in agreement, in-house agreement with the Sheriff's Office for the position, will be detailed within the Governmental Operations. This was more to request the amendment changed truly from one account number, that being from the medication request that was issued under a resolution in April, and basically going null and void for that, and asking for a new account number to leverage that position with the Sheriff's Office.
Commissioners. So earlier this year, you approved a grant match. The grant wasn't accepted, so the match was never spent. This is an updated match amount. The actual grant portion of it, you'll accept at the next board meeting, and I think that's what your question is, is what is that grant for, or at the next committee meeting? I think that was your question, is what was the grant for, and we can get into it there. This is just approving the match for that piece at a updated lower amount.
All right, thank you.
That answers the questions that I had for, in the next meeting, for Resolution 24-1193. Okay.
Mr. Chair.
Yes, sir.
So, just a follow-up question to Marlene. I think this is the grant that I was contacted by Jim Ananek about a couple of months ago. Am I right remembering that?
That is accurate, yes.
And prompted me to kind of look into the status, checked with Mr. Freeman.
Hundred and eleven percent.
He checked with you. So, I guess the bottom line, the end result is that it's now come to fruition in the way that we would want.
True.
Is that a good summary?
That is so exactly correct. It is the initiation of a start, yeah.
All right, thank you. And I see you've got some of your committee out there, and again, appreciate all that you do with the task force. Thank you, Mr. Chair.
Is there anybody else, Mr. Shoemaker?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. As far as the in-kind, where's that coming from?
Marlene.
Absolutely, the opioid executive settlement dollars, currently there are 6.5 million sitting in there, in the account, and this will, and to be honest, if we think about it, jail-medicated assisted treatment is an item that our community, you know, MSU is here, they're looking at items that we're gonna be implementing in our jail, and it's a pilot opportunity that's being leveraged.
Can you repeat that again, 'cause I didn't hear the first, what?
Jail-medicated assisted treatment.
Thank you.
Absolutely, for individuals that are showing up, that are either utilizing substances already, and they're already involved with the treatment services, we wanna be able to assist them and meet them where they're at. And so, and to be honest, this extra 250,000, and I say extra because for us as a committee, we know it's needed, and so we're kind of saving those dollars, 'cause we're being able to implement it through the Michigan State Police. And so that grant opportunity allows us to begin to truly get some data numbers, we can't even create any data numbers, 'cause we're not even able to implement anything yet. And so leveraging this opportunity, it's a grant requirement, because it's settlement dollars, we aren't linked to any state or federal, based on what we have already required to look into our Corporation Council, everything's been reviewed, and so for that, it identifies this position will be able to allow the grant to be even accepted, 'cause it is a requirement within their scope of work, if you will.
Thank you.
Is there anybody else? Seeing and hearing none, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passes, thank you, Marlene. Resolution 24-1189, approval of a proposed budget amendment to the 2425 appropriations resolution for various line items as described in the attached budget.
So moved.
Support.
Is there any discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passes. Resolution 24-1191, approval of a request by Genesee County's Health Department to update environmental health license fees.
Go move.
I'll support it. Is there any discussions? Seeing and hearing none, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passes. Resolution 24-1202, approval of a one-year extension to the contract between Genesee County and GFL to provide for solid waste disposal at various Genesee County buildings.
So moved.
Support.
Is there any discussion? Seeing none, yes, Ms. Shoemaker, I'm sorry.
Thank you, through the chair, and I don't know who can answer. Are there any other companies that provide this type of service in the area?
Yep, there are, this was one of those that was bid out for an expected multi-year contract, and we're just extending that through to what it was bid for.
If I may continue, Mr. Chair. One, I love these extension things, it's the gift that keeps giving, but my next question is, is there a limited amount of funds that we can spend on these events, 'cause they seem to be so popular, they're so booked up, we can't get enough people? Is this, am I looking at this right? This is, this is the solid waste disposal?
Yeah, for garbage pickup at our buildings.
At the buildings.
What am I, I apologize.
Are you thinking of the recycling?
Recycling and the events for the waste materials.
Totally different, yeah.
All the hazardous waste events.
That's what I'm thinking of.
Yeah, no, this is for dumpsters at our buildings.
Okay, all right, thanks, sorry about that.
Yep.
That's fine. Any other questions or discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passes. Resolution 24-1303, approval of an agreement between Genesee County and Manic Smith Group in an amount not to exceed 143,000 to provide specifications for the demolition of the, should be the old GVRC building. The cost of this agreement will be paid from the account listed.
So moved.
Support.
Is there any discussion? Seeing and hearing none, all those in favor?
Aye.
Motion, I'm sorry, anybody opposed? Motion passes, is there any other business? Thank you, and I adjourn at 5:40, which is a record for me, thank you very much.
Questions is called to order, sorry, at 5:40, roll call please.
Commissioner Lloyd, Commissioner Winfrey.
Here.
Commissioner Ellenberg.
Here.
Commissioner Brown.
Here.
Commissioner Avery.
Here.
Commissioner Shoemaker. Commissioner Kuzinow. Commissioner Wayhill.
Here.
Commissioner Davis.
All right, thank you, Mr. Freeman, we have approval of the minutes from October 2nd, 2024.
Support.
Moved and supported, is there discussion? All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, the motion is carried. It's now time for public comment, do we have any comments from the public to Government Operations? Yes, would you please identify yourself?
Hi, Michelle Ryder, Grand Blank. I just wanna talk a little bit about the opiate funds and the MAT program. As someone in recovery who has detoxed cold turkey in jail, it is an inhumane way to detox. You feel like your body is being ripped apart from the inside out, you're sweating one minute, you're freezing the next, there's nausea, you don't eat or sleep for months. So there, people die in jail from not having the assistance, and I was in Oakland County jail, this isn't anything about Genesee County, but it is torturous. If you were detoxing in jail and you're there for a month, and you don't have any medication to help you, you will not sleep that entire time, which will make anyone feel like they're going crazy. And if you are having suicidal thoughts, or, which you will, because where benzos or alcohol, the detox could kill you, opiate withdrawal will just make you wish you were dead. And it's, so if you get to that point where it's affecting your mental health, because let's face it, you're in jail, so you're already miserable, you feel like you're dying, you start to, like your mental health starts to suffer, and in that situation, you're not really able to get the help, they will just put you into another part of the jail, which is even worse than the one you came from, just so that they can watch you and make sure you stay alive. So, I want to just emphasize that, and our community deserves better. That's what the opiate funds are for, and this grant really gives a chance to avoid some of those costs because of the program. So, I know you guys have all heard it before, but from detoxing on the floor of a jail is not how you would want anyone in this community treated. That's it.
Thank you. We have additional public comment. Additional public comment. All right, thank you for sharing your story, Michelle, Commissioner Lloyd.
Just, just in short, thank you so much for coming up speaking, I did not know that, it's not something that I'm aware of, and what I ask is, is there something we could send to, maybe a letter or something to the sheriffs, to our sheriff, asking him maybe to give us some information about how the county jail, how his office department kind of supports individuals who, and notice I didn't say inmates, even though they are, individuals are going through detox and that kind of thing, just for information for us, is something I'd like to follow up on.
We can do that, I think one thing that we'll want is Marlene to come up, when we get, not at the moment, but when we get to the agenda item, 'cause it's not something we're doing currently, but we're about to begin using the grant dollars. So we, I think we should do both.
Okay, thank you.
Other public comment? All right, public comment is closed, do we have any communications? There's no communications, doesn't look like we have any old business, new business. We have Resolution 2024-1137, approval of a grant award from the Michigan Department of Health and Human Services in the amount of 71,075 to provide support for victims of elder abuse, the budget for this grant is attached.
So moved.
It's been moved and supported, do we have discussion? All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? The motion is carried. Resolution 2024-1141, approval of a grant award from the Michigan Health Endowment Fund in the amount of 155,000, 187 to provide for Genesee County's Mental Health Court, 2024-26 grant cycle. The term of this grant is October 1, 2024 through September 30, 2026, the budget for this grant is attached.
Support.
It's been moved and supported, do we have discussion? All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? The motion is carried. We have Resolution 2024-1142, approval of a grant award from the State Court Administrative Office, excuse me, in the amount of 178,735 to provide for Genesee County's Mental Health Court. The term of this grant is from October 1, 2024 through September 30, 2025, the budget for this grant is attached.
Move it.
Support.
It's been moved and supported, Commissioner Shoemaker.
Chair, I was wondering if we could move, 'cause they're very similar, 3 through 7, if it was okay with the rest of the floor?
Without objection, did, was the maker of the motion add that? I don't know who made the motion.
I made it originally, but I'll change it to 1, or 3 through 7.
Is there support for that? All right, so we have a motion, numbers 3 through 7, from page 1 to page 2, any discussion on the motion? All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? The motion is carried. We now have Resolution 2024-1149, approval of a contract amendment, number one, between Genesee County and New Path Incorporated, in an amount not to exceed 51,537 to provide substance abuse treatment services to Genesee County Specialty Courts, the cost of this agreement will be paid from the accounts listed.
So moved.
Support.
Moved and supported, do we have discussion? All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? The motion is carried. We have Resolution 2024-1150, approval of a grant award from the Michigan State Police in the amount of 250,000 to provide for a medication-assisted treatment program, match requirements of 62,500 will be provided by Genesee County's opioid settlement funding, budget details for this program are attached.
So moved. Support.
Moved and supported, do we have discussion? I think at this point, maybe if we ask Marlene to come forward, Commissioner Brown.
I was just going to ask, does this, does this address what Michelle commented on earlier?
I believe so. Marlene, would you step forward? Is she the right person? And Jillian?
Yeah.
Hi, Jillian, how are you? Captain.
So obviously, this grant is kind of a dual grant, and it's a partnership between the Genesee County Sheriff's Office, the opioid committee, and multiple facets, Greater Foot Health Coalition is also helping us, as well as New Path partnering with us to get this passed through. Like Michelle discussed earlier, detoxing inside a correctional institution is never easy. Our medical staff that we have inside the jail right now does the best that they can to provide certain medications to make the symptoms of detox easier to go through. Still not, not, not easy to go through inside a correctional institution. With this grant funds and the developing a mat program, it will allow us to have a better continuity of care for those inmates that are coming into our custody, currently involved in a medicated assistant treatment program, and we can continue that program so that they're not suffering while they're inside of our facility, we're getting them the medication that they need in a safe manner, and we're helping them get clean and on a better path to better choices and being better citizens in our community when they're released.
And so I'm gonna take that even further, right? So for our office and pre-trial services, we interview our inmates, defendants in our language that we utilize in our, prior to their arraignment, to assist the judicial with some bond options, and so when an individual is saying to us they're, they're coming off of their medication, and I'm then proceeding on, because we have no opportunity to match them right here, right now, in this moment, to a coordinator, which is what we're requesting to cover under that requirement, under the grant, for the 20%, and I honestly, I'm gonna sidebar something in a little bit, but again, for us currently, we're just telling individuals, we're gonna match you with a peer recovery coach so we can get you those services that continued after, and we know what that happens, nobody wants to even wait for that process, they're withdrawing, and as a person with lived experience, also withdrawing, but thank the Lord, not in jail, I just never wanna go. And so, I give back. And I have to say, I'm excited for the next phase here coming in November, to be able to tell those defendants, you're gonna be matched with a peer recovery coach, but hopefully they're gonna be telling me, I already got set up with some medicated assisted treatment, they got me right here at classification, because again, that is what we're utilizing those match dollars with, for us. And if you guys have any questions, I do have a correction, if I may? I love you, thank you very much, Joshua is the best.
So the grant, with that grant funds, we're gonna be establishing a, like a case manager, so to speak, inside the jail, that'll go through our inmate classifications process, every inmate that comes in the jail goes through that classification process, they'll be screened at that point by that individual, and then we can get them started on that medicated assistant treatment program as soon as possible. We're communicating with our medical staff, we're communicating with New Path, we're communicating with the court system, if that's necessary, we're bringing all of those assets together to make the system work and help these individuals improve their lives.
And we just don't know the information, you know, for us, I wanna take it even further and be able to identify what the individual was coming in as that medicated assisted treatment, so that we're truly identifying what individuals are being and utilizing in the community. Who's to say what's, what works and what doesn't work better, right? I wanna eventually meet people where they're at, but we have no capacity outside of, obviously, methadone for pregnant women, and vivitrol upon discharge, upon request, is what we're offering at this moment, so we really, I hope, are able to proceed on with a plan that we've, and again, I can't, I wanna reiterate, the jail is receiving technical assistance for free through this process, we're receiving it as our executive committee through MSU and Michigan Associated Counties, but they're utilizing the health access so that they can get experienced specifically in assistance with medicated assisted treatment, so we're not, we're not going with our eyes closed, you know, there's individuals in this county and in, obviously, the state with jails and medicated assisted treatment. We're just being lucky enough to get an opportunity, and nobody's been given before, and that's what's so awesome to me. This has never been utilized in jails, our side is a prison grant, and I have that experience from being in that world previously, so for me, the crossover is beautiful.
All right, Commissioner Winfrey.
Yeah, approximately, what percentage of the jail population are substance users?
I would say the last numbers we had, and these were more the mental health figures, but 65% of our population was, had mental health and substance abuse issues. So I don't know specifically substance, I couldn't separate that number specifically, but I know a minimum 65% had mental health and substance abuse concerns.
So is this enough money?
It's enough money for us to get started.
Yeah.
Additional discussion, Commissioner Shoemaker.
Thank you, Mr. Chair, and through the chair. So, what I'm trying to understand, and I understand we're trying to help people when they come in, they're going through detox, and there's some other issues, so explain to me what the process looks like now, and what it's gonna look like once we approve this grant. Can you do that? Is that simple?
Okay, yep. So currently, an inmate comes into our jail, they come into custody, we accept them from arresting agency, within 24 hours, they go through a medical intake by our medical staff, and that asks them a variety of questions, they take blood pressure, weights, all kinds of things, any information if you're on medication, they document all that, and then they'll proceed further with, you know, further follow-up on medical needs at that point. If they advise us at that time that they're, you know, gonna detox, whether it's from alcohol, whether it's from drugs, opioids, whatever it may be, they'll usually instantly go on to what they call a withdrawal protocol, and they're automatically put through a withdrawal program, and unfortunately, they have to suffer the symptoms of detoxing and withdrawing from whatever substance that is. There's significant risk involved with detoxing, especially somebody that's on opioids, there's huge risk, or alcohol, any other substances that someone's addicted to, there's huge risk to their health and well-being going through that detox and that withdrawal phase. They're observed by our medical staff, some people cope with it better than others, and they may not have to rise to a certain level, or a higher level of being monitored. Some individuals have to be monitored by our medical staff, so that there's a nurse or medical staff available, you know, 24/7 and right there, to check their vitals and make sure that they're drinking liquids and staying hydrated and things like that while they're going through that. And that process can last three days, it can last 10 days, it might last 30 days, it all depends on the individual. What this goal would be, would to prevent that detox phase, prevent that individual from going through those medical concerns that can hinder their health, and we can continue them on a medicated assistant treatment that's monitored by our medical staff, monitored by the New Path staff and their peer coaches, and make sure that they don't have those serious, you know, blood pressure's not dropping, they're not being dehydrated, they're not, you know, they're still able to eat. Obviously, Michelle spoke to what she went through when she had to withdraw inside a correctional institution. Being inside a correctional institution's not easy for anybody, but I can't imagine going through withdrawal while you're in there and not having some of those comforts or had any ability to fix your situation.
Right, and further from that, for an individual, let me give two more pictures, if they don't leave with medicated assisted treatment, then the monkey on their back is gonna wanna make them feel better, and I know that for myself, coming off of methadone is not fun, and I'll tell you, that was kinda worse than heroin, as crazy as that sounds.
You're gonna get out of the jail. You're going to get out of the jail and go get that fixed.
Yeah, absolutely.
Because you're going to want to solve the problem that's making you ill.
Break a law, it causes too many more items. It, yeah.
So this is not one, excuse me, Chair, if I may, so this is not something that's going to change as far as our process when they enter the jail, this is something when they exit the jail?
It'll change our process if they're in, again, it's a continuity of care, so that they're in a medicated assistant treatment program outside in the world, and they come to jail for whatever reason, we're going to continue that medicated assistant treatment that they're on, so that they can stay clean and they can have a clear mind and they can make good decisions, and then when they return to the community, they continue that care and they can continue to make better choices and good choices, work through the system.
Commissioner Shoemaker.
If they're not in a program already though, when they come into the jail, is this something we will still set up for them and...
Eventually, we're going to work towards that, but this is what we're starting, and this is the only way that we know how to start that. But eventually, that would be the goal, to potentially start every individual that wants to head down that road.
And Michelle Ryder behind me is like six months right now, so I mean, our committee is going to watch that, our executive committee.
Because I would assume that a lot of them, the reason they're there for the first time is obviously because of a substance abuse issue or mental health, as we talked before, but that's a different topic than we're dealing with today. So that's, I was just wondering about them.
We assist with that also with mental health. The cool thing, awesome thing about the jail today, Commissioner, is that we have an awesome partnership collaboration, Reach, Inspire, Serve, and Empower Rise. For individuals that are booked in our jail today, we are looking also at substance use disorder and mental health, and if you're triaged properly, we're getting those referrals done, and there's a health navigator that meets with those individuals that are identified in the community too. And so for both substance use disorder through peer recovery coaching and then the health navigators through, I'm really hopeful to say it's through the millage dollars, through our mental health millage that assists with that process. So there has been evolution strides within our jail just the last year and a half.
Yeah, because in addition to, like, obviously, this grant is going to pay for that case manager, so to speak, but that case manager is going to be able to classify the individual and identify all of their needs, whether it's that MAT program, substance abuse, whether it's a mental health needs that they need. Whatever it is that they come into jail and those needs need to be met, that caseworker, that case manager, that this position is going, or this grant is going to fund, is going to be able to put that individual connected to those needs.
Commissioner Shoemaker.
I'm sorry, everyone, I was just really trying to understand this because it's very important and kind of important to me that I understand it. But the last thing is, when they're, when we do have an inmate that comes in and they're, we realize they have an issue already of substance abuse, when they're detoxing, are they left in the facility there?
Yes, when they are detoxing, yes, they're left in our facility, and our medical staff monitors them and they check their vitals, you know, twice if not three times a day. And they make sure that they get special diets. If they're, you know, not able to hold down their food, they're getting medications to help support them through that. But it takes a tremendous toll on our medical staff to manage somebody that's going through withdrawal.
Thank you so much. I really appreciate all the information.
So Commissioner Lloyd, then Commissioner Kuzina.
Quick question. My colleague just asked a question that I wanted to ask, but I'm going to drill down a little bit more. Are those individuals who have those extreme cases, are they in the general population as they're going through that?
No, typically, they'll be isolated, someone that is extreme. Like we mentioned earlier, someone that is going through extreme withdrawals would likely have possible suicidal ideations. So then we are putting a suicidal watch on them as well, and so we have to put them into an elevated or secluded safety cell so that they're monitored, they're on camera, they're getting their welfare checks every, you know, 15 minutes to make sure that their needs are being met and that they're still alive.
Thank you.
All right, Commissioner Kuzina.
Yeah, thank you. You might have answered this in your discussion, but no, I didn't hear it. But when a inmate comes in and when they're first assessed, and if they say they're not on any substances, but yet they, so, you know, you push them through, and they end up in the jail population, and obviously, they're not going to be, their drugs are not going to be available to them, and they'll start to go through detox, whether they wanted to or not, they're going to right there. And so what type of training or rules or policies are in effect to the deputies that are in there watching them to, I mean, is there something that they're trained to do to watch for that? I know when it's a serious problem, it's probably pretty obvious, but some of the, you know, because everybody's different, and some of the less obvious ones, you know, are they being watched for?
Sure. So our deputies are trained. Every deputy within their first year of being hired in at the sheriff's office goes through 160-hour Corrections Academy, and during that Corrections Academy, they're taught on how to recognize the signs of withdrawal and substance abuse and all kinds of other medical issues or mental health concerns. And then they also have 20 hours every year of continuing education requirements that every corrections officer has to go through as well. So we do train on that. We're constantly doing training with Greater Fault Health Coalition has brought Narcan in. We have Narcan available anytime that that may be necessary for somebody coming into our corrections institution. Our paramedics come out over and talk with our corrections deputies frequently, and we rely on our medical staff that's there as well. So if a deputy does recognize somebody that has some signs or symptoms of withdrawal or, you know, because not everybody that's coming in, obviously, there's a deputy that's talking to them and they're, you know, in a uniform, and you might not want to tell somebody in a uniform that you're, you know, I'm high on drugs and I'm going to withdraw, because it's not necessarily a comfortable conversation to have with somebody that's wearing a uniform. So we like to rely on that honesty, that those inmates are going to tell us everything, but we know that that's not always the case. So we have to watch out for that, and our deputies do get the training to make sure that they recognize those signs, and we get them the help when necessary.
Okay, because I know back a few years ago, we went through a process of making sure all the, especially the officers that were on the road or hooting about to de-escalation type of instruction or whatever and class. So these are also being taught, what you're, what I'm asking is, is that the jail deputies, the correction officers, they're also trained to watch for that.
Yes, sir.
Thank you.
Absolutely.
Additional, Commissioner Avery.
Yeah, just real quick, I know a lot of times we have a lot of support systems in the jails. Is there an idea of having like a peer-to-peer support group for those who have gotten through that real crucial time to have that trust for the individual? I don't know if that's ever been a thought, but sometimes that peer-to-peer will allow someone to come forth and feel supported and almost stay anonymous in a sense.
We actually have three New Pass peer support coordinators working inside the jail currently. So we have those, that peer support, they do one-on-ones and they do group sessions as well, so.
Okay, all right, thank you. Appreciate it.
Commissioner Brown.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. It sounds like we have a pretty comprehensive ecosystem of support around this issue. My question has to do with on the court side, and I know we've approved, and we somewhat regularly approve, funding that we've gotten from the state for things like sobriety court to help people, you know, stay straight. I wonder if there is, if there are data that we have to show the impact with those kinds of things, just so we can understand the intersection between the courts and the jail system.
Well, hopefully with this grant, we'll be able to put some more of that data together to prove the need as well as what problems we're solving along with it. So I know we work hand-in-hand with a lot of our specialty courts, and sobriety court is one of them, but that'll be the goal with this program as well. In addition to providing this case manager, providing medication, we'll be doing that data tracking.
We do have, do we have some baseline data so that we can kind of see kind of what Commissioner Shoemaker was getting at, the before and after picture?
As far as like sobriety court and data supporting that, I don't have any data on the court side of it. Our systems aren't...
What's so beautiful though, the specialty court director, the specialty court director is here, Dr. Brown, though.
You have a specialty person here.
Yeah. It's almost like we stacked the deck. I just brought some base, so for our felony recovery court, I pulled our last five years because that was our last SAMSA grant, we served 369 individuals, most of them came from the jail. And then so far, looking at this cycle ended 930 of 24, we had roughly a 60% successfully graduated rate, which means they did not reoffend at least one year prior, or post-graduation. A lot of our people currently are meth, and that's really hard. I know that's taken a huge toll on the jail and the detox process with that, so we're looking forward to this. We think it would really benefit our specialty courts because we are seeing majority of our people coming out of the jail, so.
Thank you. That's the kind of data I was looking for.
Okay. Commissioner Kuzina.
Yeah, I think that was my experience in dealing with the Veterans Court. They'd have a lot of that data, and I was just wondering if there's coordination between that court and the other courts, you know, because it's got to be the, I mean, the veterans are only dealing with the veterans, but, you know, people are people, whether they're a veteran or not. So there's got to be some type of coordination, I would think and hope, between the different courts for collecting, I think, the data that what Dr. Brown is requesting. Is that going on?
So for us in community corrections, we'll definitely, so we're a partner definitely with RAN and the specialty court. So for us, in community corrections and pretrial services, if individuals are in supervision with us, we're working with the Michigan Indian Defense Councils, the prosecutors, we're making referrals also to the specialty court, so individuals are being able to be screened that are identified as eligibility criteria. And then, as surprising it is, she's the specialty court for all the umbrellas.
Yeah, so just for some context, specialty courts now, under my umbrella as of February, is Veterans Treatment Court, Felony Recovery Court, Family Dependency Court, and Mental Health Court. So all of those are served.
All right, that answers my question. Yeah, thank you.
Yep.
Do we have additional discussion? Commissioner Lloyd.
The original request that I had before we got to this agenda item, please disregard that. This has been a great discussion, and I feel more informed. Thank you.
The other thing is, when someone is medicated going through withdrawal, especially in jail, my experience would have been completely different. If, especially with IGNITE, there's so many things going on at the Genesee County Jail that people that are detoxing will not even, like, your mind isn't there, you won't learn anything. And then, I know it was mentioned, when you get out of jail and you don't have anything, then you're going to call your dealer. But the danger of that is, if you've been in jail for 30 days and you get out, a lot of people don't realize that they are, they don't have that in their system anymore, and they overdose, because they're picking up where they left off instead of starting, you know, they're not going to start at the dose that they initially did. So that's huge. And then when they're out, they can go, their mind's clear. You have, you can think about the things that are important, and you're way less likely to call a dealer if you are comfortable and you've been alone with your thoughts or in an educational program. It's a huge difference. If I would have had that, I probably would have been clean years sooner. So it's really important. And to answer part of your question, the, they have to have been on a program within six months, and there's a lot of reasons people go off of those medical programs. The methadone clinics, you have to get there at like 5:00 in the morning, people don't have transportation, you get kicked out of like Suboxone programs if you test for opiates as well, which a lot of people do because they're not, they're not used to that formula. So they're just doing what they know to do, which is also dangerous. So, but the people who are coming out of jail and overdosing immediately is a thing.
It's a huge risk.
Commissioner Lloyd.
So I know we won't be able to exhaust the entire conversation because there's so many things we can talk about, but you just raised something that is now glaring, right? Is there any transition support that they're getting on the way out the door, conversation, hey, anticipate this, you're not going crazy? Like, what does that...
Not fully yet, though, that's what we want to get in the future.
That's the whole purpose of our RISE program, our Reach, Inspire, Serve, and Empower, is we are getting ahold of those in addition to our IGNITE program. We're getting ahold of those individuals while they're in our custody, while we have that control over them to get them clean, and then it's a soft handoff or a warm wraparound, so to speak, when they get released from custody, and we can help get them transitioned to housing, we can get them, you know, to continue their medication, and, you know, as part of that RISE program, also get some connected to their kids so that they have that relationship still with their kids while they're in custody, and it can continue on when they get out of jail. And so, so it's that full wraparound service that we're trying to improve and perfect inside the jail.
So back to, as we wrap a referral, back to you, Mr. Freeman, because I think there was some conversation previous, some months, a month ago, about maybe some entity or some partnership nearby, if you will, you know, where folks would be able to access coming out of jail and that, you get what I'm saying? Can you provide something to the commissioners, just an update as to that? Thank you.
Do we have additional discussion? So I've got a couple of questions. The way I read this, the money can only go for people who are addicted to opioids, is that correct? Or can it be used for alcohol and other substances?
VIVITROL.
It'll be ten on the case, so it could be any substance use disorder that an individual, so it's not specific to opioids, it could be alcohol, whatever substance use disorder they suffer from or substance they've been using, we'll make sure that they get treated.
Okay, so the settlement dollars aren't restricted to only opioid-related...
Substance use disorder and mental health, and they're, under exebity, it breaks down certain items, and this specifically was issued to our Michigan Association and Council so they could just identify with attorney generals and everybody that it was cleared. But to be honest, it is not specific to opioid use, it's substance use disorder.
Okay, that's good. Thank you. And then I heard the number 65% at the beginning, the jail has how many inmates on average, somewhere between 400 and 500?
Right now, we're probably averaging around 550 on a daily basis.
550, okay. So of the 550, we think 65% have some sort of substance abuse issue. That's a lot of people. Of that number, how many qualify for this program because they've already been in some sort of treatment, and how many don't qualify?
At this point, I don't really have the data just to give you a number on that, because it's not something that we've tracked, because it's not something that we've been able to provide.
Okay. So that, my last question, I think, is, I would love to know how many will qualify for this versus those that don't. It sounded like, I heard what you said earlier to Commissioner Shoemaker's question, that we're going to start with the population that has already been in a program. Is that because we don't have additional dollars, or is it because you want to start and just see how it goes? Because my view is, after hearing some compelling stories and information tonight that, and we've got a pot of money, it seems inequitable to me that we would allow some people to suffer in the ways that have been described if we have money to help them.
We have to start somewhere, and as, based on what these medications cost, this grant, we're thinking will probably get us to six months to a year, but we, again, we don't know until we start having those conversations with the individuals that are in our custody to communicate those things. And so this is just kind of a starting point to see where, what the need actually is, and then we can work from there.
And when will this begin? I know the grant starts October 1, right?
Yeah, it starts October 1. As soon as we get this approval to accept this grant, we hope to have this up and going and medication being administered hopefully by December or January.
Okay. If I could, I'd ask for you to come back after the new year at some point, if I'm still here and I win my reelection. I would love to know how we can help more.
Absolutely.
All right, thank you.
Thank you.
All right, we have a motion on the floor. All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, the motion is carried. Resolution 2024-1152, Approval of a Contract Between Genesee County and Genesee Health System in an Amount Not to Exceed $16,000 to Provide Mental Health Supportive Services to Genesee County Mental Health Court. The cost of this agreement will be paid from account listed.
I move it.
Support with a question.
Moved and supported. Commissioner Kuzina.
Yes or no, this $16,000 comes from the millage or not?
Yes or no, this $16,000 comes from the millage or not?
So, the $16,000 would come from the state court administrative grant that we received, which is referenced in Reso 1142.
Okay, thank you.
All right. Do we have additional discussion? All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? The motion is carried. We have Resolution 2024-1153, Approval of a Contract Between Genesee County and DNA Drug and Alcohol Testing Center in an Amount Not to Exceed $201,200 to Provide Drug and Alcohol Testing Services to Genesee County Specialty Courts. The cost of this agreement will be paid from the accounts listed.
Support.
Moved and supported. Do we have any discussion? All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? The motion is carried. We have Resolution 2024-1157, Approval of a Grant Award from the Michigan Indigent Defense Commission in the Amount of $15,962,465.71 to Support the Operations of the Genesee County Office of the Public Defender for the Period of October 1, 2024, through September 30, 2025.
Move it.
Moved and supported. Do we have discussion? Mr. Lloyd.
Can we have the public defender come talk about this? Thank you, sir. So, overview of the impact of these dollars, what the dollars are used for. So, I see that it's operations, but I know it's a big number. I just want to know more.
When you say... Good evening. When you say you want to know more, it is the budget that we utilize to make sure that we are delivering adult indigent legal services during the course of the year. That encompasses my staff. It encompasses the management, managed assigned counsel that take care of the misdemeanors in District Court, and my... The attorneys that are on my roster that take care of all the felonies that happen in Genesee County.
Yes, sir. Thank you. Question to you, to Mr. Chair, to Mr. Freeman, or our finance chair, or you. So, is this... Do we budget? I think we budget resources for this office as well. So, this is like normal and customary? I'm in support, so let me be clear.
There's a... There's what, 15.9 that comes from the state and 1.3 that comes from the county.
Got it. Okay. That's my question. Thank you. I'm clear.
All right. Do we have additional discussion? Commissioner Lloyd.
And do you have to apply for this every year?
Yes.
Wow. Okay, thank you.
Additional discussion? All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion is carried. Thank you, Judge. We have Resolution 2024-1165, Approval of a Purchase Order to Auto-Clear Security Inspection Systems in an Amount Not to Exceed $120,300 to Provide for the Purchase of Baggage Scanners. The cost of this purchase order will be paid from the accounts listed.
I'll move.
Support.
Moved and supported. Do we have discussion? Commissioner Kuzino.
The baggage scanners, is that for the courts or what is it for?
Yeah, that's to replace those scanners that we currently have. They're just old.
Okay, thank you.
Do we have additional discussion? All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? The motion is carried. Resolution 2024-1180, Approval of an Agreement Between Genesee County and NICE Justice in an Amount Not to Exceed $311,556 to Provide for the Purchase of a Digital Evidence System. This is a three-year agreement to be paid from the account listed.
So, moved.
Support.
Moved and supported is their discussion.
Yes.
Commissioner Shoemaker and then Commissioner Brown.
Dr. Brown.
I was just going to ask if someone could describe the digital evidence system and in what way it would help make things more efficient or effective.
Tammy Phillips from the prosecutor's office is here.
Good evening.
Digital evidence has become unwieldy for lawyers to handle in the criminal justice system. If you think about all the body cameras that the police are starting to use, if you think about all of the film that we're getting just through social media, surveillance cameras, Ring Doorbell cameras, there is hardly a case that comes into our office. And Judge Perry would probably agree, everything has some type of digital evidence associated with that. The cost to store it is a concern. The problem that drove us to look for a solution was the ability to interact with it. These files are large, they're cumbersome, they're multiple per case. So, in order for our staff to simply watch the three-hour video, you have to download the three-hour video, which on our present systems sometimes takes longer than three hours. And, everything has to be done in real time. Fast forwarding is difficult. If I download it once, I have to store it somewhere on the Genesee County network to be able to access it quickly. If I close out of it, then the next time I want to see it, I have to spend the time to download it again. Part of that is because we are bringing everything within our environment. One of the things that NICE Justice provides is a huge codec that's able to read all of these different video systems that are creating this evidence. But, the big piece for the interaction with the material is that I go into their system and I do whatever I need to do there. I can watch it. I can redact something if it needs to be redacted, if I want to create a trial exhibit, you know, take some clips of pieces of it. I can do that within that system. It creates kind of a companion case that lives along the one inside my case management system. The second really important thing is, is it allows us, at a more cost-effective rate, to be able to store that material. Capital cases, cases that are punishable by life, my records retention period on those is 50 years after the case is inactive or until a defendant is deceased. So, I have to manage that information for a long period of time. And we're having cases right now that the appellate court system is requiring us to reopen and examine again from convictions that were had in 1976, 1983. So, this ability to cold storage a lot of this digital evidence, the documents, the digital paper that we're storing is small and cheap in terms of file size, but it's these videos that are quite large. So, those are kind of the three points where it increases our efficiency. So, we're able to work faster and smarter. And it will also benefit the defense bar. They'll be able to view these without having to download them. And all of the area police agencies that are submitting stuff to us can submit it in a much more efficient manner so that they're not having to wait for all of this stuff to upload to our system as well. Thank you.
Additional discussion? Head Commissioner Shoemaker and then Commissioner Kuzino.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Several, but just to start with, what happens after the three years is up to that data? Do they charge you a fee to convert it to another system if we went with another system?
No. It just reverts back to our system.
If I may. When you say reverts back to our system, what do you mean our system?
We would pull it back into our prosecutor by Carpal storage system where it presently is stored.
So...
And then, we're back to the old-fashioned way. Sorry, we have to download everything and watch it within our environment.
So, right now, what we have... Sorry, Mr. Chair, if I may.
Please continue.
Is a system that can't retrieve these videos or anything you need in a timely manner?
The very large ones, correct.
Should we be getting rid of the other system and look for something else then, instead of having two systems?
We have not found a system that behaves in this same way. There's nobody else out there that owns the codecs that NICE Justice does, and there's nobody else that offers a case management system that has the ability to store your videos outside of the system and work within their environment.
When you say that, you're talking about the other system we use, then?
So, our case management system that we call Carpal works very, very well for the majority of the stuff that we needed to work for. It works very well for some of the smaller videos, for photos, for some short audio recordings. But, particularly, some of you might have heard people use the term phone dump. So, evidence that we might need off someone's cellphone, when we dump the entire contents of their cellphone, that can take up to multiple terabytes of data just from those phone dumps. We don't even have the ability to store those within the Carpal system because it's just too large of a file.
That's what my concern is, though, is moving forward, we cancel this agreement. Let's say something doesn't work out. You're telling me now that they don't have the ability to store all that data that we're going to have in the NICE system and... Am I saying that correctly?
Carpal.
Carpal system.
We have the ability to store what we have in there now. The stuff that we can't store in there now, we're storing still on physical hard drives and exchanging it via discovery with the defense still on physical hard drives. So, we're kind of required to use part new digital management techniques, but we're left in the physical world due to the file size of some of the items.
Commissioner Shoemaker.
So, obviously, from your discussion, you're telling me you guys have looked into their systems, one system that could do both, and there's just not anything like that out there?
Not found.
Okay, thank you.
Not that means... There may be one system out there, but the cost is so extraordinarily burdensome that you're better off with the two systems that we have.
Well, this is pretty... You know, 10 grand a month is pretty pricey for data storage and retrieval, you know, so I'm just...
But, it's not just, if I may, it's not just data storage and retrieval, it's the ability to manage the evidence. I can store the data, and then I can go and I can get it. And that was an option that we originally looked at, but this actually does it for less money, and it allows us this capability to manipulate the data as needed for the purposes that we would have to manipulate it.
Thank you.
All right. Commissioner Kuzino.
Just for clarification on the cost, Tammy, the $311,000 plus, that's the total for the three years, or that's a yearly thing for three years?
No, that... I'm sorry, that is the total. It's $90,000 in year one, 97 and some odd in year two, and then 124 in year three.
And that... Yeah, and that money is in your budget?
It's in the High Crimes Community Support Grant budget. That's where the money is coming from.
Okay, and then, hopefully, in three years, there may be other companies that do the same thing. And then, you could bid it out, or you just automatically go back to them?
Well, I think that, much like our case management system, Carpal, we have our data there. I don't anticipate going out to try and find something every three, four, or five years that's going to replace it and be better. In three years, we will know what the price increase would be from NICE. The information that we have, looking at their past increases, did not seem to be extraordinary compared to what other systems were requiring. The two main competitors for this business are NICE Justice and then a company called Axon, which does a lot of the body cams. And NICE Justice prices based upon your storage activities, so the stuff that you don't have to access very often, they park over here and charge you cheaper rates for it. The stuff that you're accessing often, they charge you more money for. Axon simply charges you based upon the number of people in your office. So, it ends up being $120,000 to $125,000 a year. So, we tried to pick the system that seemed to have the greatest benefits into the way they set their pricing structure, both for the current contract and looking to the future.
Okay, so, basically, you looked at other systems.
Yes.
Okay, thank you.
All right. Is there additional discussion? All right, thank you.
Thank you, Tammy.
All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? The motion is carried. Resolution 2024-1193, Approval of a Letter of Agreement Between Genesee County's Community Corrections and Genesee County Sheriff Office Regarding the Residential Substance Abuse Treatment (RSAT) In-Kind Matching Grant.
Move it.
It's been moved and supported. Do we have discussion? All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? The motion is carried. Resolution 2024-1221, Approval of Entering Into a Contract with Peckham Incorporated, Whereby Peckham Incorporated Will Provide Vocational Rehabilitation Services for Youth in the Career Academy or Career Academy Plus Programs or for Youth Placed in the Genesee County Juvenile Justice Center Residential Program for a Term Commencing October 1, 2024, through September 30, 2025, in the Amount of $640,000 to be Paid from the Accounts Listed.
Move it.
Support.
Moved and supported. Do we have discussion? Commissioner Lloyd.
What does the vocational rehabilitation look like? What does that entail? Is it preparing them for, I don't know, re-entry into the workforce? Is it preparing them for, you know, job interviews? What does this entail? Can anybody speak to it?
Rhonda Iam here from the court. She would have those details for you.
Okay, I don't want to hold it up. I support moving that to full commission. Can you ever come to that meeting? Thank you.
I know when we did the tour, the tour and the grand opening, that we got to see a little bit of instruction, instruction in classroom areas, but I agree with you that we should find out more.
Yes, thank you.
Any other discussion? All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? The motion is carried. Resolution 2024-1228, Approval of an Agreement Between Genesee County and Genesee Health System in the Amount of $275,000 to Provide Multi-Systemic Therapy. The term of this agreement is from October 1, 2024, through September 30, 2025. The cost of this agreement will be paid from the account listed.
I'll move it.
Support.
It's been moved and supported. Do we have discussion? Commissioner Kuzino.
Just a quick question. The $275,000 comes... What's this account? Is that the millage account or something else?
I believe that number, and Crystal will correct me if I'm wrong, is the Child Care Fund. So, we get 50% reimbursement back from the state of Michigan for this.
I understand. Thank you.
Additional discussion? Commissioner Shoemaker.
Mr. Freeman, to the chair, to Mr. Freeman, if he can answer this question. So, we, as the county, are paying Genesee Health System to administer this?
They come in and provide the service, yes.
So, we pay the mental health millage. Has any of the mental health millage gone to this at all?
I don't believe any of this is funded through the mental health millage. And if you'll remember, the mental health millage had specific criteria for what it could be used for, and I don't believe that this qualifies under that criteria, but I can verify that information for you.
You would, please.
Yep.
Do we have additional discussion? All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? The motion is carried. Resolution 2024-1229, Approval of a Contract Between Genesee County and Genesee Health System in an Amount Not to Exceed $65,000 to Provide Mental Health Assessments, Evaluation, and Services for Youth on Probation. The term of this agreement is from October 1, 2024, through September 30, 2025. The cost of the agreement will be paid from the account listed. It's been moved and supported. Do we have discussion? Commissioner Kuzino.
Once again, same question. Is this from the millage or is this from the 50/50 through the state?
The 50/50.
Do we have additional discussion? All those in favor, please... Oh, I'm sorry, Commissioner Shoemaker.
Can verify on that.
Well, same thing, but in addition to that, to Commissioner Kuzino's question, we're getting a 50% grant, but we're matching the other portion with county dollars.
Yes.
Not from that millage that our residents pay.
No.
For mental health millage.
Correct.
Okay, just wanted to clarify.
All right. Do we have additional discussion? All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? The motion is carried. Resolution 2024-1232, Approval of a Contract Between Genesee County and Genesee Health System in an Amount Not to Exceed $85,000 to Provide Behavioral Health Services for Youth at the Genesee County Juvenile Justice Center. The term of this contract is from October 1, 2024 through September 30, 2025. The cost of this contract will be paid from the account listed, we have a motion, did I hear a support?
Support.
Moved and supported, Commissioner Kuzinow.
Once again, I assume this is 50/50, not the millage.
Yep, same answers.
Do we have additional discussion? Good? All right.
So many things I want to say, Mr. Chair, but I won't.
All right, thank you. All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
The motion, all those opposed, the motion is carried. Resolution 2024-1255, approval of pay for the Genesee County Board of Canvassers.
Move it.
Support.
Moved and supported, do we have discussion? Do they get combat pay if the election goes through January?
Hopefully they won't need it.
I'm hoping that's true. All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, the motion is carried. Do we have any other business?
Sure.
Committee Government Ops is adjourned at 6:37.[604.54]
Commissioner Wayill.
Thank you. Derek, I want to thank you for your leadership. I think that it's clear that you're elevating the recognition and status of veterans. And also, importantly, the Veterans Rally that you put on with your staff and Lauren was fantastic. That day, I got to witness her passion around that. And thank you for inviting me to be there and thanks for having it in the 8th District this year.
Any other questions? All right. Thank you, Colonel.
Oh, yeah.
Oh, I'm sorry.
I just have a quick question, and this is maybe an obvious question. Is there any idea about the price tag for this?
Price tag. So for the floodlights that we're purchasing for this building, we're looking at purchasing about 50. They are, I think they were $40 for a two-pack. So...
So not very...
Yes.
Not so... Okay. Okay. Thank you.
Hey, anyone else? All right. Thank you, Colonel.
Thank you.
Okay, going on to new business. Resolution 24-1187, approval of Genesee County's Operation Green Light for Veterans.
For...
Property moved and supported. Any discussion? All in favor? Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Nay. Ayes have it. Motion carries. Resolution 24-1195, approval of Amendment Number Two to an agreement between Genesee County and OLHSA in an amount not to exceed $1,781,711 to provide for Genesee County's Early Head Start Program.
So moved.
Support.
Property moved and supported. Any discussion? Commissioner Lloyd.
To you, Mr. Chair, or to you, Mr. Chair, and Mr. Freeman. Can we have someone come to our next committee meeting to give an update overall on the Early Head Start Program? I know when we talked about it some time ago, it was at a place where, you know, it was difficult maybe to find like staffing and there were some monies that we end up maybe sending back and those kinds of things. So understanding staffing, enrollment levels, understanding like maybe getting the detail of the locations where this program is taking place will be great.
Okay. Ms. Coleman, did you hear the question?
Good evening.
To the Chair, to Commissioner Lloyd. Yes, sir. We can have someone at our next meeting that would be able to answer all of your questions regarding Early Head Start and will bring some data if I recall them correctly. You want the locations and the status of enrollment.
And staffing and the other pieces like if we're like on track to like spending the money that's been approved, you know, or not. You all were very, very responsible in the past, to my memory, of coming back saying, "Hey, we won't be able to spend this because we have these challenges." Just an overall, all-encompassing update as to where we are with this program.
Absolutely.
Thank you.
All right. Any further questions? Thank you, Pam. Okay. Any further discussion? Seeing none. All in favor? Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Nay. Ayes have it. Motion carries. If there's no other business before this committee, we stand adjourned.
6:50.
Mayor Lloyd. Mayor Winfrey.
Here.
Commissioner Ellenberg.
Here.
Commissioner Brown.
Here.
Commissioner Avery.
Here.
Commissioner Shoemaker.
Present.
Commissioner Kuznal.
Here.
Commissioner Wayill.
Here.
Commissioner Davis.
Approval of the minutes of October 2nd.
So moved.
Report.
Any discussion or corrections? Seeing none. All those in favor? Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carried. Any public comments? Any public comments? Third time. Any public comments? Seeing none. Communications, we have something from Mayor Corr.
Yeah.
Park of Recreation.
Madam Chair, there's been a bit of a change. Patrick Linehan is here to speak about the Flint River Shed Coalition, Watershed Coalition Program. You want to come up and kind of walk through that presentation that you handed out, Patrick? And/or Nancy? Whoever, or both of you?
Can I see your packet?
Same hand in hand.
So as you recall, earlier in the year, we accepted a grant from the CS Mott Foundation for an executive on loan. Nancy Edwards went to the Watershed Coalition to be their executive director to help free up some finances within the Watershed Coalition. Around the same time, the Watershed Coalition Board, as they were, were looking at ways to be financially stable into the future. And at that point, they had approached us along with CS Mott to talk about how Genesee County Parks could help the Watershed Coalition into the future. So we've worked closely with the Watershed Coalition since they've been founded. We've always had somebody on their board. Our naturalists at Formar work hand-in-hand with the monitoring program for the river and the tributaries throughout the river system. And our missions are very, very similar. So we've been working for the past year on how we could integrate the Watershed Coalition into Genesee County Parks, like how Keep Genesee County Beautiful has become a program of Genesee County Parks. So with this, what we're looking at is for them to become a program of us and the Watershed Coalition will become an advisory board to Genesee County Parks. So I'll let Nancy give a little bit more in-depth on it.
Hi.
Cool.
So yeah, so I just had my one-year anniversary of being on loan to the Watershed Coalition. And boy, have I learned a lot. What we're looking at is trying to sustain the organization and the work that they've been doing since 1998 when they started, you know, acting as the voice of the river. It's been increasingly difficult for them to maintain funding and, you know, and keep things going. And it's important. You mentioned, somebody mentioned, "Could we turn the river green?" There's a video going around today that I saw about something coming from one of the outfalls that was green, and I got phone calls. And I dug in and I found out that it was actually dye that was put into the outfall to check for a leak. But this is what we're doing at the Watershed Coalition. We're dealing with these calls and these situations that come up and trying to figure out what's going on. It's important for the organization to stick around. So we've been trying to figure out how to make that happen. And it seemed to be a natural fit to bring it in under the county parks. And I know that that's been talked about for, you know, in the background for a while. The missions are similar, the work is similar, the partnerships are there, the collaboration is already there. And we're looking for the way to make sure that the organization and the work being the voice of the river and protecting that natural resource continues. So bringing it in as a program of the county parks allows me or whoever's the director the flexibility of looking for additional funding in a way that we're not able to do right now. It allows us to continue the partnerships and the collaborations and grow the organization and continue the work that's happening. Patrick mentioned Keep Genesee County Beautiful. If you know the history of that program, it started as its own entity and then was brought in as a program of the county parks back in 2016. And that has allowed that organization to thrive and to continue the work in the city of Flint Parks. The current board, and we've got a couple of our board members here with us today, they will become a Friends Group. And that is the, again, modeled after something that we do at Formar, where we have Formar and then we have a Friends of Formar group. And so the current board will become a Friends of the Flint River Watershed Group. And so they will maintain their involvement as well. Grant-funded, so again, this is all dependent on the organization continuing is depending on my ability to write grants, which I've been pretty good at for a long time, so wish me luck. But getting it housed under the county parks is part of giving me the flexibility to seek additional grant funding.
So I think one of the important things to note right now, and Nancy can correct me if I get this slightly incorrect, but when you're an organization, you can only get so much of your funding from private foundations. It's called tipping. And right now, the Watershed Coalition, their main funding comes from CS Mott, and they're at that tipping point. So, you know, even if they could get more money in at this point, they can't accept those funds. So to be able to do, to be able to offer their mission and what they want to do, you know, the funding just isn't there for it.
Welcome to the world of grants. Yeah. Yeah. The tipping thing is you can't have more than 33% of your funding from private foundations. And so the budget is small at the Watershed Coalition, and we've hit that max on private foundations already. So I need to, I need the flexibility to be able to look for more private foundation money. So by coming in under the county parks, they look at that budget, which gives me the flexibility for more private foundation dollars. Trust me, I have, I have over a million dollars in grant ask out there right now for different things that I'm trying to hopefully get. But again, like it's just to buy me the flexibility to look at more private foundation dollars.
Is there any questions? Mr. Kuznal.
Yeah, first of all, I'm, you know, done hoeing the program. You know, as...
Can you speak into the microphone, Commissioner?
Yeah, as a finance chair, you know, I'm a little... I just want to make sure. One year, your salary comes from the Mott Foundation for one year. Is that going to continue?
Maybe.
We don't know.
The grant that we wrote, we wrote for the rest of this year till December 31st with an extension into the first part of at least six months, about, I think, till June of 2025. And then with this, if this, once we get this through, I've already talked with the CS Mott Foundation, and I've presented them with a budget for the next year, which would include money for myself and other people. So...
Yeah, the Mott Foundation is fabulous in what they give to the community. And, you know, I just wanted to know what was planned into the future as far as what it would cost the parks to continue the partnership. You know, and I'm a little unclear as to, you know, the tipping point and how joining the parks allows you to go higher and receive more money. It's still a third, though, isn't it?
The county park, the park's budget is much larger, so a third, 33% of their budget is a lot larger than 33% of the Watershed Coalition budget.
But I know a lot of their funding is grants, the park. I mean, we have a millage that they work off of, but then they receive a lot of milli, I mean, grant money too, from, you know, the state, the DNR, the Mott Foundation, and et cetera.
Correct. But the difference is private foundation dollars versus public dollars or government dollars or like State of Michigan, that's not a private foundation.
Correct.
Private foundations, CS Mott Foundation, Ruth Mott Foundation, various family foundations that I've gotten funded for in the past. So the bulk of the money, the grant money that comes to the county parks is not private foundation money.
Okay, all right. I'm beginning to understand better.
And actually, so Genesee County Parks, our EIN number is Genesee County. So when they look, when the federal government would look at that, it would actually go against, you know, the whole county's budget, not necessarily just our budget. So...
Okay, so it's not just yours, it includes ours too.
We'd be fine because really, honestly, all I need is about $500,000 a year to operate and do what we need to do, so that's not going to impact too much.
Okay, thank you.
Mr. Lloyd.
Hi. First of all, thank you. I think it's great that different organizations and such entities look to collaborate and, you know, partner and that kind of thing. I don't know how many of my colleagues are already aware or have already had discussion. I'm just seeing this at first look. And just a few concerns, a couple of easy ones. The grant, the, I see that your office is saying Keep Genesee County Beautiful. If you come under the county, do you stay in that space? Is there a lease agreement?
So the building they were in is the old former Servall Building down by, behind my brother's keeper on Curzly Street. That building is owned by URC, Uptown Reinvestment, and it is leased to the Watershed Coalition for a dollar a year.
Okay, so that takes me into another question I have. I see that there are a number of grants and such that you all have been able to successfully receive as an organization. But once you come under Genesee County, then I guess if I'm hearing right, then that organization ceases to exist but becomes an advisory?
No. Two parts to this. The programming will be under the county parks.
Okay.
So the programming and the grants that I write for the programming, the grants that I write to support the staff will still happen. It'll just be under the county parks. What's going to move, the current board will become a Friends Group. But the programming and the staff associated with that will come underneath the Parks Commission.
Parks Commission, that's under Genesee County.
Correct.
Right. So I guess one piece, and I'll digress for any other questions. One of the things that I immediately thought about is how you all have received the various grants and stuff successfully. And then now, if you're associated with the county, what does that look like in terms of your ability to secure those same grants? Because now, based on what I heard, now you're a part of the government. You're part of the county, right, under our parks system. So can you talk about that?
Yeah, so they're going to retain a 501(c)(3), is it? (c)(3) status. So for some of the grants that they're getting that, you know, we can't accept as a government, they will still act as a fiduciary for those grants and pass through for those sort of programs.
Okay, I'll digress for a moment. I have a number of questions. Like what you're talking about, but I just, in terms of comfort level to be able to vote on it right now, it's a lot of information I need.
Mr. Kuznal.
So as an advisory group, then, committee, you're not really one of the board members. We're, you know, so you won't have a vote on the Parks Board that we appoint.
No, they won't have a vote on the Parks Board.
I didn't think so, but I just wanted to clarify.
Friends. Any other questions?
An important thing with this too is the SOA is the first step to be able to seek those grant funds. So like the Mott Foundation...
Patrick, can you move over to the other microphone?
So with the CS Mott Foundation, until there's an agreement in place, you know, they won't start to have the discussion for funding, so...
Commissioner Brown. Did you have your hand up, Commissioner Shoemaker?
Go ahead. I've got so many, you're going to get tired of probably hearing me talk a little bit.
Congratulations, Nancy, on your one-year anniversary. It seems like just yesterday that you went over there. But I have two questions. Number one, since the, and I had a chance to tour the building too a couple of months ago. It's a delightful little building right by the river. My question has, because I just understand that it's owned by the Uptown Reinvestment Corporation. What if the, will they be responsible for putting on a new roof or doing repairs to the building or something if something happens? Or will the county, to what extent will the county be responsible for any upkeep of the building?
So that's one of the reasons why the Friends Group is going to exist, is to help with building maintenance costs, and that is not going to go to the county.
Okay. All right. And my second question is for Patrick. It has to do with capacity because once the Flint River Watershed Coalition is folded in, will your office, I'm assuming your office will be responsible for monitoring those kinds of grants? And I know very little money for administration of grants is, you know, baked into those programs. And so my question is, and I know you just got a big HUD grant recently that we approved last month, you know, that doesn't have any administration built into it. So do you have the capacity? To what extent do you guys have the capacity to do additional monitoring? And will that be a part of your role?
So as part of the budget, we did put in an 8% admin fee to be able to cover that. We do have a person that, in the Finance Department, that specifically works on grants. So with that, this won't be any different. We're not, the grant reporting and that for the Mott Foundation and that, we had that down pretty good because we do so many of that. And the grant reports for general services, you know, they're not that taxing. So, you know, I don't think for us that on the administrative side that that is going to be an issue. As part of the plan, Nancy will bring somebody in who will train. And then eventually, that person will become a supervisor that will be over the staff over there in 2016.
Okay. Thank you. Mr. Shoemaker, did you still have a question?
Oh, I've got, yeah. Go ahead, Marty. Can I go first?
Mr. Lloyd.
Yeah, Lloyd goes first.
Well, I called on you. I seen you first before I seen you.
Okay, okay, okay. I'm sorry. Just what will be helpful for me, because it's a lot of different components to this. They're getting grants, they're not doing the grants, they're writing the grants. We don't pay for their salary, they do, and all of that. I'm not saying that is a negative, I'm just saying it's a lot to be understood here to have some type of like flow chart or something that really lays out very clearly all of the components of, you know, their organization and how the county fits in and so on and so, you know, who's responsible for what, what staff we currently have. Because when we start talking lease agreements and we start talking about, you know, this grant pays for this staff person, well, what if the grant isn't there? What if, you know, Uptown says, "Hey, we're not going to do a dollar a year because now you're with the county." Somebody changes over there and they say, "We got to charge you some fee." Whatever you don't have as far as grants, now that's under the county, and we are having a conversation at that point potentially about who pays this salary and how is this lease paid for? And who's going to make this repair, that kind of thing? So if you can put something together that shows it, how all of that flows, it will really help to better inform my understanding. And then lastly, this is great, the information has helped me understand more about the watershed. I support what you're doing, but I need to understand more. And so based on the discussion, I'm probably going to make a substitute motion, not at this time to postpone this for another time and get more information in a flow chart at minimal.
That a motion?
I'll make that motion.
Is there a second?
I'll support it.
I have a motion and a support. Any just...
Can I ask a question?
Yes.
Based on the substitute motion? It sounded to me, at least I think I heard, that Mott Foundation is waiting until we vote on this to engage in more serious discussions about whether they'll extend...
At what level they'll support?
Extend additional support. The motion that was just made will obviously, if it's approved, will put this off. Does that put your relationship with CS Mott or the program officers in any sort of jeopardy or...
That does make it a challenge, I will tell you that. The grant year for CS Mott Foundation is January 1st to December 31st. My request to them is going to be due in December. And I need to start working on that, and I need to solidify that relationship and with my program officer there. So it does, it does create a challenge. The Watershed Coalition currently has enough money to get through the end of this year. If I can't get this in place, the Watershed Coalition is not going to exist. There is funding for me, I believe, until the end of May, and then I would just need to be able to wrap things up with it, with the, you know, with the organization. So timing is really critical here. I understand what you're saying about, and I live this every day, so my apologies if I haven't explained this very well.
Oh, you're doing good.
That the Watershed Coalition will not exist if there is no outside funding. It's not going to be picked up by the county parks, just like Keep Genesee County Beautiful is completely grant-funded. So if the Ruth Mott Foundation doesn't give Keep Genesee County Beautiful the grant, that program goes away. It's not picked up by the county parks. Same thing with the Watershed Coalition. If I can't get the funding in place, the Watershed Coalition is going to go away. It's not going to get picked up by the county or by the county parks. The building will revert back to URC. And, you know, and it won't be a burden on the county at all for that. Staffing-wise, all of the staff will be paid for out of grant funds if I'm able to write the grants and get the funding to put in place. I've been a county employee for almost about 23 and a half years. Of that 23 and a half years, more than half of my career here has been grant-funded. So if I didn't have the grant funding, you wouldn't have me standing here. But for, like I said, for most of my time in the county, I've not been paid out of the Parks Millage. I've been paid out of grants that I write and have written for a long time. So, you know, the burden on the county, it's nonexistent. This is to give me the flexibility to look for the funding and to be able to work with the program officer and see about keeping the organization going. So it does present a challenge to me if this gets put off because you don't have very many meetings left this year. So it's kind of, it's kind of critical.
If I may, Madam Chair, through you to the maker of the motion, the substitute motion, what's your vision about how long it would be postponed and when we might be able to take action?
So two pieces. Flow chart, not to be redundant, but I'll just keep it short in saying that because I don't understand it, one. Number two, and this is, you know, for our team and department, and this is great, so this is not a negative. When we have something that's this serious where we're talking about we're not going to exist and we're not going to have funding, those are things that need to be timed where we get them more in time so we can talk about it and digest it and think about it. To bring something this important is very important. And I really hear in your heart, you're doing a great job, how important and imperative this is. We have to have the time in advance to be able to stomach this. This is committee tonight. Our board meeting is next Wednesday, and we need to be able to make a decision this important. I mean, we have a presentation, this is great, but I don't understand it. I don't. And if I had to vote tonight, my vote would be no because I'm not comfortable voting on taking something, and I'll end with that, with all of these components, and we haven't really had enough time to flush it out. I don't know what other information others have, but mine is just limited to the last 20 minutes we've been discussing it. So that's my response. My vision for it is really just to get something where we can look at, what are we responsible for, what are we not, how it flows, how our staff fit in, what money, that kind of thing. If I see that, that would help me a lot.
Madam Chair, if I can just jump in.
Yes.
So this isn't the final vote tonight, right? We have that next week. If you're not comfortable with the information, you can certainly vote to not approve it because this is just kind of moving it through the system. I don't believe that if we wait until November, that it will cause a problem. I've had conversations with the Mott Foundation about this process moving forward. I think that ultimately, we can get there, that we can answer all of your questions, and that ultimately, the board will see the benefit in moving forward with this. So I don't think that even delaying it until November because they can continue to do the work they need to do in writing the grants and putting everything together for what the foundation needs. But whatever it is that makes you all comfortable to make sure you have the information you need, well, we can either work between now and next week or... need, well, we can either work between now and next week, or we can work between now and November 13th to get that information to you. I think that, I think that this program, the work that they do is very important, monitoring the river, the health of the river. For Genesee County Parks, you know, we often tout that we have 11,000 acres, where the majority of that has the Flint River running right through it. So we obviously have a strong interest in ensuring that the, the, the health of the river is where, where it needs to be, not just for our own self-interest, but for our community too. But I'm more than happy to cut out time between now and next week, or between now and November 13th, whatever makes you comfortable, to get you where you are, are comfortable with moving forward.
So, so in all fairness to what you just suggested, what I'm willing to do is withdraw my substitute motion, and, and if I'm able to say why. Because then, over the course of this next week, you all can put that together, and if you all will come back to the next meeting to bring more information, I think that's more responsible than we, me then sending it back. However, you know, I, I still want to have the consideration if, you know, the understanding is, is not there, and we'll, we'll work and try to understand, but I, at this time, I will withdraw my substitute motion, hopeful that you get some kind of flow chart to us between now and next week.
And, and Madam Chair, if, just to that point, if you don't have the information you need, you guys can always postpone it until the November meeting, and we can get that additional meeting, or information so that you're comfortable.
Thank you for the indulgence.
Right, Mr. Kuzdal.
This is a question to legal. Brian, if in the future they get audited for one of the grants and they didn't follow the proper procedure, and whoever the grantee was, if they want their money back, where does that come from? The county, the parks, or their organization? I don't want the county to be responsible, is what I'm saying.
Well, it would depend who the grantee is. I think you'd misspoke and meant to say grantor, if they have the grantor.
Yeah, I did, yeah.
I guess I don't understand either if the, the grants would be going to the Genesee County Parks Commission, or the grants would be going to the Friends or the Flint Watershed Coalition? I, I don't know.
Yeah, okay, you know, I, between now and next Wednesday, could you research that and give us a more clear answer?
Yes.
I, I would need, yeah, yeah, I would need to know who the grantee is.
Yeah, because I don't, I really don't want to postpone, I want to keep moving, but I understand what Commissioner Lloyd is saying, is that next Wednesday if whoever, you know, doesn't have enough information, you know, we can postpone it again like Mr. Freeman did at that point in time. But, you know, we just need a little more information, and I would like to know an answer to that.
I would just say generally whoever receives the money would be the entity that would have to pay it back if the audit found that the money was misspent.
Okay.
And I, I just don't know who that would be right now.
Okay, so if they, if that were to happen, and they were asked for, you know, $100,000 back or something, and they didn't have it, then they could just fold and go bankrupt or whatever. And then would the parks, which is us, be responsible then? That's, that's my question.
Yeah, I'd have to look into that. I, I wouldn't think so.
Okay, I don't either, but, you know, I'd like, I'm not a lawyer, you are.
Sure.
I want your answer.
Sure.
Thank you.
I mean, I think Patrick did state that if there was grants that were received, it would be under the eyes of the parks, the people that watch over the grants now, right?
Yeah, so, that, that is correct, but also if there are grants that we as a government agency cannot accept, but a nonprofit can, the Friends Group can accept those grants. That's one thing that we do at Formar, the Friends Group can accept a lot of grants that we cannot, and then they grant those to us.
Okay, but who watches over the grant to make sure it's being spent right? Is it the people, the staff that does the work?
It's, it's whoever received the grant. So the, the Friends Group at this point, they do have a, an attorney that they work with-
Okay.
-who helped draft the SOA. You know, they would be responsible on that end. If it's a grant that we accept, we're responsible on our end.
Okay, all right, thank you. Mr. Shoemaker?
Thank you, Madam Chair. Several questions to start with. You'd made a statement about time, this being timely, and it made it seem like that the Mott Foundation will give you less or more dependent if you're with the county. Am I misunderstanding that? So, because you have to file now and they need to know whether you're with the county or not, is what you said. So what that makes me believe is, you were under the impression that they will either give you less, or not give you as much if you're with the county, or more? What, what did you mean by that statement, if you could clarify for me, please?
So what I meant by that was in our current structure, as a 501(c)(3), we're, we are subject to tipping. And with tipping, only 33% of your budget can come from private foundations. The budget of the Watershed Coalition is about $300,000 a year. That means that the CS Mott Foundation can only give us up to $100,000-ish, okay? So by not be, by having the program come under the county parks, that removes that tipping situation because it's based on a bigger budget. So an ask that I've put together for CS Mott for half a million dollars, they can entertain.
Okay, so to clarify, you believe you could ask for more than if you're under the county?
I believe I can ask for more if we're under the county, yes.
Okay, thank you. Next, Madam, continue, Madam Chair, I've got several questions. From the standpoint of some other things, and I, and to my colleague in the 1st District, I, I have to say, this is a big ask to bring in front of us even a couple weeks. This is, this is a major decision and an organization to the county. So, I mean, I am still at the point, I, I don't think, I don't know if I'll be ready by next week even, no matter what you provide us. I mean, it's campaign season on top of everything, and some of us have jobs on top of campaigns, and it's a lot going on, but if we're going to continue, we'll go from there. Speaking of this, we will assume all the liability then, once you're under the county parks, am I correct, Brian?
I don't know enough about this to give an answer at this point. It almost sounds it like the county would be, in my head, I see this as the county purchasing services that are provided by the watershed with grant money. But I guess I don't, I don't really understand the, what's the whole thing either.
See, and that's where, Madam Chair, where I'm, I'm supporting the Commissioner's motion, and I still believe it's the right thing to do, is postpone this, is, there's a lot of questions here to answer. And unfortunately, when I've got corporation counsel that doesn't know and can't answer it, I mean, who's an attorney, okay, who's, if we get in trouble, is going to put us on the right path to protecting the residents, this, this is, this is a big ask. And not that I'm against it, I just, my job is to be accountable to my residents and make sure we are doing everything that's best for Genesee County and them. Not knowing these questions, like from the liability standpoint, what liability do we have? Commissioner Kuz knows questions about the grants, because we've been there before, where we have not filed grant paperwork correctly, and guess what? Another county entity that has to take care of another department. So these are all things that really are very valuable to us before we make a decision. And I don't know if you're going to be able to have those answers by next week, if you guys want to move forward. So be, I've got a few more questions I'm going to carry on with here, but these are things that I would like you, if you could, please look into by next week. I would love to know beforehand, and I'd probably come up with a few more once you have your answers. And Brian, I know you work hard, and I appreciate emails and some other stuff, but if I may, Madam Chair, continue.
Yes.
Thank you. You guys are monitoring the water quality of the river. Why is the DEQ not doing that?
They are. So what we do is, one of the programs we do is called Bentec Monitoring, which the DEQ doesn't do, but that's actually going in the river and looking at the bugs. We, we, we pull, we take samples, we look at the bugs, because what bugs live in the river deter, can determine the health of the river. And what bugs don't, that you expect to see that aren't there, will tell you if the river, river is healthy. So Bentec Monitoring does not, not, that's not something that Eagle or DEQ does. We do water quality testing with kids. So we have a program that's called Green, which is working with students in all of the, the middle school and high school students. We, we worked with over 1,700 kids last year, that we take them out and they do chemical testing, and they learn about the health of the river, and they learn how to test. It's kind of a job, career kind of path for them as well. It meets STEM requirements that schools have, and so we're working with teachers and we're working with kids, and those kids are learning, and then they, they take what they've learned and they present it at a conference that we hold at Kettering University every spring. And we're already planning for next year, so there's that, that chemical testing that's done so that kids learn how, how to monitor the river and what it means to have a healthy river and all of that. In addition to that, the CS Mott Foundation gave a $300,000 grant to a professor at UofM Flint who is doing chemical testing of the river too, based on what happened with the Lockhart spill. We're trying to determine whether or not the fish are healthy and all of that. So that's happening right now, it actually started this spring, and so they're monitoring that. We work with Eagle, we work with the DEQ. I have a couple grants out right now where we're gonna, where we want to do additional monitoring and testing of soil, because we know that stuff is leaching into the river from soil contaminants. So we, again, we're working with all of those people to, to be able to find the answers to what's going on in the river.
If I may continue. Couple, couple questions onto the, the kids. Is it one school, a bunch of schools we're bringing it from?
Oh, we had 19 different teachers in, no, wait, 19 teachers in, I can't remember the data from that, I'm sorry. But it was 1,700 kids, it's not one school, it's schools all throughout the watershed. So we were in Schwartz Creek, we're in, in Lakeville, I mean, we're literally all over the county and working with schools all across the watershed.
How old are these kids, do you mind?
Middle school and high school.
Awesome, thank you. The next, back to your comments about Eagle. So there, what, what you're telling me is we're getting very minimal services from them and we got to pick up the slack, considering they know the history of what's happened in that river and the lack of care that has been taking care of it over the last century. So what you're saying is, we're basically needing to pick up the slack because they're not really, don't have the resources, not willing to spend the resources to take care of it?
I'm not saying that, because we're working with Eagle. And so what I'm trying to do, again, I've been in this position for a year. I'm trying to learn who does what, who's responsible for what, and that's part of the learning of all of this, is trying to figure that out. So I'm not, I'm not going to say that they're not picking up this, or doing what they're supposed to be doing. What I am saying is that we're, that I, I've developed a relationship with staff at Eagle, that they're now, we, we talk. They've provided me with a lot of data that they've collected over the years, they just had staff here, they, they are monitoring the river. So that is happening. And then, like I said, I've got a couple of grants out there right now so that we could, if we get funding, we can do some additional testing. Let me also point out that I, we are connected now to the Genesee County Emergency Preparedness Team. Metro and, and Ashley Herbig from the, the Health Department, those are the folks, whenever there's a spill in the river, that get deployed. I have a relationship with those folks. In fact, and I was telling you about today, you know, there was a, there's a video going around about, you know, some green stuff that was coming out in the river. I found out about it, I immediately contacted Metro. Metro got, we had a text string going with the city and all of that, we figured out what was going on, and, and we solved it, and I was able to answer the questions for people. This is not the first time that that's happened. In the last few months, having developed that relationship, we have been able to figure out what is going on and who's doing it. I will point out another incident that happened just a, maybe a month ago, sometime within the last month. There were people that saw these big pools of blue, like blue water by the river, and it was clearly not something that should have been there. I got a phone call and an email, and I was able to figure out and, and get with Metro and get that team out there, and within, like, within a half an hour, we had spilled, Michigan spill response, we had the county, we had the city, all out there, trying to figure out what was going on. They figured it out, there was a painter who was doing some work at a business across the street, and when he got done with his job, he decided he was just going to dump his paint into the storm drain. Okay? I didn't know this, never thought about this, but when, whatever you dump in the storm drain goes right to the river. And so Metro, from our emergency response, got the name of the guy, brought him back to the site where they had him sign something saying that he was responsible, and he is getting the bill for the cleanup. This is what happens for the Watershed Coalition in terms of what's happening out there. We didn't have, this organization did not have that relationship with the Genesee County Emergency Preparedness Team until I came on board. Because I'm a county employee, and I know people, because I've been around for a while, we made it happen. So we're on these things all the time. We're having a, we have a grant, actually, the county parks has a grant right now from the DNR to install an accessible kayak launch behind our building, which will give people an opportunity to kayak who don't normally have that opportunity. Paddle programs, another big piece of programming that we do. So we have the kids stuff that we do, which is a lot, and we do paddle programs. We were trying to schedule a, to take you guys out on the, on, you know, for a trip this year, and I don't think we were able to kind of pull that together. But I wanted to take you out so that you can see from the water what it's like, what we have here. That's another huge piece of what we do. Storm drain stenciling. We have a contract with the Genesee County Drain Commission where we do work with them to tell, teach people about storm drain stenciling, putting stuff, not putting stuff down your drain, knocking on doors, doing, doing education. We have, in Phase 2 communities, we do that for the Drain Commission. So we are so connected with the county already in, at Formar and all of these other places, it's just kind of a natural fit to have it become a program of the county parks. The work we're doing supports the work that the county's already involved in.
Thank you, Nancy, for all the information that you're getting. I hope that that's helping a lot of people. Are you?
I'm, I've got one other question, then I'll, I'll save it.
Can we wrap it up? Okay, I mean, you asked your two more questions, please.
Well, I was patient enough to let everyone else speak.
Okay.
And so, and save mine, but if this is typical of what generally happens when I want to ask questions, but I'm, I'm gonna be courteous, since everybody seems like they want to move to next week and I can ask more questions. I just had one that really is going to stick with me all weekend, and Patrick had mentioned it. You'd, you'd stated that what you wanted to do is make it more, it would be more financially stable under the parks. So it's not financially stable now, is what you're saying?
Correct.
So, and you don't think, you think that for sure that's going to be a, something that'll change under us?
Yeah.
And because you're going to be able to get the additional grants, and you're going to be able to use the Friends Group, and the Mott Foundation can actually help and contribute more, those are the three main reasons?
Correct.
Okay, thank you. Thank you, Madam Chair.
Yeah, I just had a question out of curiosity. Patrick, you had mentioned that there are some grants that the county cannot accept. What are those kinds of grants?
So for the Friends, what?
Generally, what we've learned as we've explored this, and I've served in these-
Can you come up and introduce yourselves?
Could you come up, state your name?
My name is Tom Saxton, I am the Vice Chair of the current Flint River Watershed Coalition Board. This has been, and I completely respect the council's questions, and, and thank you for being stewards with our tax per dollars. I understand this, it's a long process. Basically, this model allows the Friends Group now to apply for many of the grants that are out there in the ecosphere that are only available to nonprofits. Formar uses this model as we speak, and their attorney, David Lawson, has been a counsel for us throughout our process. We had to do a lot of learning too, because we didn't want to let go of our mission. I mean, we were passionate about this, and Nancy spoke about all the reasons we are passionate. Stewards of the river, educators of the, our young people about the environment and about the importance of the river. about the importance of the river, and, please don't forget about the State Park coming online, and how that all tied together, too, and how Genesee County Parks is involved in that. That is, to me, it's a sweet spot. So, to answer your question directly, Councilperson, there are a big portfolio of grants that only nonprofits can apply for. So, the model would be, when we have an opportunity to apply for those, we would take responsibility for that, we will continue to have our new Friends Group active, we will apply for the grants, and just like Formar does, we will then administer the grants to the programs. We will monitor them, we will be responsible, we will be legally responsible, I believe, and I will hope we will do, we can trust that we'll do a good enough job following through on those grants, so that we don't have to go out of business someday. I'm confident that we will not have to, given the track record of the organization prior to our need to go into this model. Councilperson mentioned earlier about so many grants now don't have a lot of administrative percentage fees, that's where we got into the problems. We were paying for our staff through those very small dollars, their administrative dollars, that just haven't been enough to maintain quality people like Nancy and two other staff members, and continue to fight that fight. And that grant cycle goes up and down, as you all know, and now we've got people that work for us, who are worried about paying. If we're able to leverage the private foundation grants through the program, i.e. Mount Foundation, perhaps Ruthmont Foundation someday, we can create a pool of money within the program underneath the auspices of Genesee County Parks, and have stability for the staff to continue the good works. In the meantime, the Friends Group, which is connected to a lot of the different organizations Nancy's already mentioned, will continue to work diligently and passionately to support the river, and help in any way we can. We will continue to advocate for the health of the river, but we most, and we will support and work with the program, which is under the County Parks, and we will be able to provide that sweet spot of being able to apply for those, not, those grants that are restricted to nonprofits only. It is complicated. I can, I respect the questions. We, as a board, went through this process now for months. My colleague Eric Schapansky back here chaired a committee and worked through all the details. We've done our due diligence as a board, we, we have taken a vote to continue this process, and we have presented in front of the Parks Commission and, and got their approval, and now we respectfully want to continue the process. And as a citizen and proponent, I believe, I, I appreciate, Councilperson, looking at all the risks, I get that. I want you to be stewards of our dollars. I, that's a good thing. But I really think this way is going to work, and it already does work to keep, kind of, keep Genesee County beautiful. And then, Formar is a little bit different model because of the, the history of it, but the nonprofit piece, sorry for the long-winded response, the nonprofit piece allows us to go for the entire portfolio of grant dollars that we, Genesee County Parks cannot go for, because they're a government entity, has been, has been mentioned. So, passionate about it, thank you for listening.
Thank you.
Appreciate it.
Can I just?
Mr. Brown?
Okay. I just want to add that, thank you, Madam Chair, I just want to add that part of our North Star, it's not just about the funding, because I believe that your organization, the Flint River Watershed Coalition, is critical, and I feel more comfortable as a citizen, I think my constituents will feel more comfortable as, you know, citizens, knowing that you are, your agency is around. And plus, I want to remind people, remind our Board of Commissioners, that part of our mission is to keep and maintain safe, healthy, livable communities. That's part of our North Star. Your existence is helping us to reach that part of our mission. And I want to also say that, you know, when Patrick responded to my capacity question, he gave your response, I trusted your response, in that you've been doing this grant review stuff for a long time, you have the people to do it, and you can get it done. My question is, besides Formar, and I think Genesee County Beautiful, do we have other models like that, that are already in existence, that have been folded under the county, and that are operating adequately?
Not within County Parks? Josh, can you?
I mean, maybe a way, a different way of thinking of this, like, tonight, you, you guys approved several grants, right? You approved the Head Start Grant. We don't get funding for Head Start, we don't do Head Start programming.
Right.
If we don't get funding for the Watershed Coalition programming, we don't do that fun, you know, that programming. Maybe that's an easier way, or a better way of, of looking at it.
Yeah, but when Head Start did go sideways, we did have to pay back some of that money.
We did, and that was through poor administration, and we fixed that problem.
And I, I think that was my fellow Commissioner's concern, and I, I can appreciate that concern, too. But I, I just wanted to try to paint the bigger picture of our mission, and the importance of leveraging relationships, which Nancy has done, the importance of leveraging funding between the county agency and the state agencies, and I'm glad the gentleman brought up the fact that the State Park is coming here, too, which makes it even more critical for the Flint River Watershed Coalition to be a partner there. That's all.
Okay, thank you.
Just--
Mr.--
Oh.
I see Mr. Lloyd had his hand up.
I spoke already.
Just real quickly, I think, and, and too, in this entirety, when we're talking about the process of our approving of these type of situations, I think also we need to look at the fact that I sit on the Parks Board, and they had to wait to have it approved by the Parks Board, and then come to the Commission. So, I think of the Board, we may have to analyze, how are we going to go about making more efficient decisions, because now it's presented as, it's just now being presented, but it was previously presented to the Parks Board first, out of protocol. So, I think that's something we may have to look at as a policy, or a procedure, or how do we go about being efficient with those items that have to wait for their respective immediate boards before coming to our Board, because it does seem like it's all of a sudden, but it hasn't been. So, I just think that's something we need to be mindful of, you know, going forward.
Okay. Thank you. Mr. Lloyd?
I was going to actually double down on the same point, especially, I was going to circle back and ask that question, how long has this been contemplated? I mean, how long has that processed? And that, like the gentleman, you are doing a great job, he mentioned, hey, we've been at this for months and months and months. We haven't, as a Board, it's been tonight, right? But, but the other piece I want to highlight is our Corporation Counsel. I chuckled, I appreciated your response, because it was very honest, and please, continue to be honest like that with the Board. That's what, that's what we're looking for. If you don't know, you don't know, if you ain't seen, you haven't seen it, you haven't seen it. And so, when we're talking about this kind of thing, you know, anywhere else that we've served, our attorney understood it, they were able to answer questions and those kinds of things. And I don't know, I'm digressing now, that between now and Wednesday is enough time for you to get the flow charts and stuff that we talked about here, for him to do it. So, Mr. Freeman, since you suggested that we do have more time, I still think a couple weeks for us is still realistic, so I'm going to remake my substitute motion to postpone it to the next committee with the ask, and hopefully I'll have support, that our Corporation Counsel works with you, and Pat, or whoever, flip this thing over, and come back and tell us that, you know, this makes sense, this is where the issue is, or we're all set. I'll be ready then.
Yeah, I can do that.
11:13.
So, that's a motion. Or--
Okay, it's been a motion and a second.
And that'll be 11:13.
Yeah. Any more discussion? All those, and, let's do a roll call on it.
Quick question I have, just before we begin. So, in light of that going to the committee, they would still have to wait for the formal Board meeting for approval? Okay.
Going to take two more meetings.
Yeah. It'll be the 11th and 7th, so the 18th. Or, excuse me, it would be the 20th.
Of November, that is.
November 20th would be the appro, the final approval date, yep.
Committee would be the 13th, and then the Board would be the 20th.
Another question regarding process, would it be, would we be able to have a subcommittee with perhaps, you know, Commissioner Shoemaker, Commissioner Lloyd, others who have other questions regarding understanding? Could that subcommittee get together and, you know, get, get a better understanding until they're comfortable, and then come back? I mean, i, if, if that's, I don't know what your schedules are like, but I heard Commissioner Shoemaker say, you know, there is, you know, campaigning and all this other stuff going on right now. I, I just don't know if that's possible.
I, I, to, to you, if I may, through you, Madam Chair, I don't mind jumping on the Teams or Zooms, or something, and having a conversation. I don't, unless our Corp Counsel and such aren't able to digest it between now and that, that, that final meeting, I don't see why we wouldn't be prepared to take action at whatever meeting that is. To me, that's more than enough time--
On the 20th.
--to get it digested, talk about it, that kind of thing. So, if you're comfortable, I am, but I don't see us going past that date, taking action on it. That's not my intention.
I think, Madam Chair, if I may, just--
Yes.
You know, there's four specific questions that were asked tonight. For sure, we can get that information, or request, that we can get that information to you by Monday. These specific questions, I think Brian maybe wants to look through the agreement to better understand that before then, but I don't, I don't see the, the 13th as being a problem, and being able to answer any questions that any Commissioner may have.
Good, so basically, we have a motion on the floor, and a second, and we're, if there's no more discussion, we'll take a roll call.
Commissioner Lloyd?
Yes.
Commissioner Winfrey?
Excuse me, and we're voting to postpone. Yes.
Commissioner Ellenberg?
Yes.
Commissioner Brown?
Yes.
Commissioner Avery?
Yes.
Commissioner Shoemaker? Commissioner Kuzinow?
No.
Commissioner Wayhill?
Yes.
Okay, motion's been passed to postpone until November 13th, with the information being given to us by Monday, of the four items that's been mentioned. And if Brian can kind of fill in on what you've researched, too, on what our liability would be by joining, so.
May I just add something, Madam Chair? Is there, so I know that we have the, the PowerPoint, or this information, is there an actual narrative summary, executive summary, that describes what this will look like and how it'll work? I think that, talk about a flow chart, but I think if there's not a narrative that describes what this would be, because these are more, to me, bullet points, informational bullet points about different aspects of the, the programming, the financing, but I'd like to see a several paragraph narrative, if that doesn't exist, put together.
And we can look at the SOA and take some of those pieces out of it.
Yeah, I mean, I'm generally in favor of this, and as long as my colleagues can get their questions answered, I know the work of the Watershed Coalition, I used to be on the Board at one point in time, so all in favor of clarifying and figuring out a way forward.
All right. So, we've discussed that, so we'll go on to Resolution 2024?
That was a motion to postpone that.
Okay, postpone that, okay. Any other business?
Only thing else, and I don't know how much you all want to stay tonight, but I've got before you the resolution that was passed in 2021 about vehicles. I think our immediate concern has been taken care of. We've set aside those vehicles that were going to be purchased, Equinoxes, which I think are Canadian. Ray was at a conference last week, and it's been said that Chevrolet's going to start making Impalas again. So, if we have to make it, wait a year, we can wait a year on those vehicles that were going to be Equinoxes. So, there's no urgency to talk about it tonight, but if you guys want to talk about vehicles tonight, I'm, I've got nothing planned for the rest of the evening, so. Happy to stay. Or we can talk about it some other time. There's no immediate need, I guess, is my point.
So, everybody's got this paper and looked at it, and that was being taken off. All right. Any other business? Motion to adjourn at 7:50? Or 7:11? Okay. 7:50.